Good evening and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Common Council of the City of Hartford. All proper notices were sent. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Lori.
The mayor and all alderpersons are present.
We have before us a unanimous consent agenda. President Hagy and Alderperson Turchi.
Motion by Alderperson Hagy, seconded by Alderperson Turchi, approving the following three items. The Common Council minutes of March 28th, 2023, approving the purchase of a new 2023 Ram 1500 four-by-two classic tradesman truck from Ewald Automotive Group for the Cemetery Park Department for $31,214 and accepting the Ewald Automotive Group trade-in offer of the 2008 GMC Sierra 1500 pickup in the amount of $5,000. The total cost and payment after trade-in is not to exceed $26,214. And number three, approving the purchase of a Landscape Structures Playground from Gerber Leisure Products Incorporated for the Candy Cane Park for a cost of $38,610.
Well, that's interesting. That's about the price of the lot if we would sell it for that candy cane park.
Yep, yep.
Interesting. I did have one interesting point in the fact that if in 2008, 2023, we keep our record going of using vehicles for at least 25 years. So that's a wonderful thing. Go ahead, Dennis.
On the minutes, I just want to make sure for some clarity. Motion by Alderperson Webb, seconded by Alderperson Hagy to approve executing contract documents for the next generation housing project, pilot project, engineering services contract with R.A. Smith in the estimated bid amount of $328,372 with the contingency of a memorandum understanding with the county and a second plan replacing the single-family homes with more duplexes and/or townhouses. I want to make sure that it's either or, that it isn't, because the way I'm reading this, it's specifying that the single-family homes are out and duplexes and multifamily are in there. And I want to make sure it's clear. A thought that I had on, we voted on the existing plan and to look at more duplexes or townhouses. And the wording that I was, I'll just suggest, understanding with the county as presented and to look at a second plan replacing the single-family homes with more duplexes and/or townhouses. I don't want it to be confused at a later date, a year from now, for instance, and then it doesn't read right. So that was the intent. I don't know that I would have voted for it if the single family was definitely out.
Understood. I think that was the intent. We were looking at looking through both lenses, so.
It was.
Okay, we'll make that correction.
All right.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, any other comments, questions, concerns regarding our unanimous consent agenda? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those no, motion carried. Thank you. Communications, Lori.
We have someone coming for a transient merchant license. I'm not sure if they're here. True Green? Anybody here from True Green? I guess not. Oh.
Hello.
There we go.
Are you from True Green? Are you from True Green?
No.
You want to be?
You want to be?
True Green was looking for a transient merchant license and they had actually four individuals apply that were going to be going door-to-door.
Okay.
So, and for lawn services.
So because they're not here, basically, they would hold off until the next meeting?
Sure.
Which is conveniently located next week.
Yes. Well, actually, yeah, if we could reach out to them and say, by the way, in order to get this, you really should show up, but you are fortunate, as Steve just mentioned, it's only a week away.
Right.
So that's a nice thing. Okay, wonderful. Super appearances and citizen comments. Under the mayor report, we have the recognition of outgoing alderpersons. This is the last meeting for two of our alderpersons. The first I would mention and want to thank for his time on the city council is our own Alderperson Sikora. Kyle, you did a great job, and you know, I encourage you to keep running, but I can understand you've got a lot on your plate. I think you've represented your district well. Very happy to have you. You brought up some very salient points. You are always participating in the discussion, and that really is the type of individual that we're looking for. So I just wanted to sincerely thank you on behalf of not only the common council, but a grateful public for your service on the city council. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is your time. If you'd like to have a time to the public to say anything, you're more than welcome.
Oh, not in the next section?
Oh, okay.
Well, you can do it that way, too. I was just giving you a.
Okay, well, we'll certainly do it that way. Absolutely. He's assuming I'm going to call on him. Yeah, obviously, the next one is, I think, why some of the people are here, it's certainly why we all happen to come to this meeting, and that is, that's the only reason, was to thank for 31 years of service, which I don't know if that is a record or not, but it certainly is in my book. I mean, I've been around just under half that time.
Not to Lori, it wouldn't be.
Correct. Well, on this, on this side of the dais is our own Dennis Hagy, representing the second district, having done a phenomenal job in that. I just wanted to give you a little bit of historic perspective, if I may, of Dennis and what he's been through. Interestingly enough, all this did happen on his watch. A year into it, Signacast came here in 1993, so he predates Signacast. He predates J.D. Laser, who came in 1997. He predate, well, I can quit saying predates because that's kind of. Zeller Transportation, which started in 2002. Halfway through Dennis's tenure, we had the Walmart open up here in beautiful Hartford, Wisconsin. So we got our Hartford Walmart, and Dennis was, was only halfway through with his service to the city. Of course, during that time, too, he had significant growth on Highway 60 and East Sumner Street. Most of the fast food restaurants were here after Dennis came. It's obviously, you could tell by his build, it was because of his horrific appetite that he, he attracted all these restaurants. He was one of the things, or one of the powers that helped save the Chandler Ballroom from the wrecking ball, which obviously was a very important part of our history. And just to give you a real perspective, 30 subdivisions went in during Dennis's tenure. I mean, that, from my perspective, really says it all in the fact that the growth of the City of Hartford pretty much mirrors Dennis's service to the city. It's not often that people will take over three decades of time and donate it to public service. Dennis and I, obviously, we've had a few things that we've gone back and forth on, but that always made it spirited, which has always been fun. The service has been given, I think, very generously, all that more people were like Dennis Hagy, to be able to step forward and serve, not only with the quality that he served, but obviously his tenure. We certainly all wish Dennis the best, from a health-wise, from a retirement-wise, and I'm really hoping that he will continue to represent the City of Hartford if it works out for him with Mid-Murray. I mean, that offer is still there. You've done it for many years very successfully, and they were begging me to keep you. But they didn't have to, because I think Dennis has done a wonderful job representing our community, even outside of the community. And that goes to show the strength of his resolve to do the best for the city, which is really a wonderful thing. So with that, I do have a plaque, reading, "In sincere appreciation to Dennis Hagy for 31 years of unwavering service to the residents of the City of Hartford, as a distinguished Alderperson, council president, and devoted member of numerous boards, commissions, and committees." And with that, sir, a sincere congratulations. Absolutely. And of course, it is National Arbor Day, the proclamation, which I am duty-bound to read if we're going to keep our Tree City USA status.
I did have a couple of comments.
Oh, you will, but you get to go just beforehand.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I don't want to.
No, I don't want to jump ahead. Sorry, sorry.
No worries. We will give you your regular slot.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll wait until the end, afterwards.
Exactly. Okay, this is our proclamation. Whereas in 1872, I won't make any comment, Jace Pearleng Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the City of Hartford has been recognized as a Tree City USA and Tree Line USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways, and whereas the City of Hartford will hold the 2023 Arbor Day City Tree Planting at Woodlawn Park on April 28th, now therefore I, Timothy C. Mahalik, Mayor of the City of Hartford, do hereby recognize Friday, April 28th, as Arbor Day in the City of Hartford. And for the City of Hartford, I urge all citizens to continue throughout the year efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry program, as well as urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Dated this 18th day of April, signed Timothy C. Mahalik, Mayor. So, thank you very much. Same time next year, I feel like Batman, same Bat Channel. Okay, and item C, discussion and consideration of appointing Chris Reinky to the Police and Fire Commission. Go ahead, Steve.
Again, normally, next week, when you have your reorganization meeting by state statutes, you would have all the placements on the different committees. We have one individual who we'd like to approve tonight to the Police and Fire Commission. As the mayor said, that's Chris Reinky, and he would be coming on to fill a vacancy on the Police and Fire Commission. They've got a meeting tomorrow night, thus the reason we're doing it a week early. So that is the recommendation and appointment by the mayor.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Wayne.
Move for approval.
Okay, we do have a motion for approval, seconded by Tony Garza, and before we have the vote, only because he's in the audience, if you could just please come up, just step up to the microphone, say hi, so everybody knows who they're putting on our wonderful Police and Fire Commission. Maybe just a 30-second bio.
My name's Chris Reinky and live in Hartford for nine years now, formerly from the City of West Dallas. I was a West Dallas firefighter for 32 years and retired and then moved up to Hartford, and we just love it up here, my wife and I, and our two dogs.
Super, thank you very much, and we appreciate you coming here and volunteering to serve. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those no, most secured unanimous. Enough, if anybody wants to clap, take a clap. Ah, super, okay, we go to aldermanic requests. President Hagy.
Mayor, did we skip citizens' appearances and comments?
Citizens' comments.
Oh, I suppose, well, aldermanic requests, discussion. Where is it? There it is. It's right after, in fact, I jumped ahead of it with my mayor's report. I should have been.
See, and I was jumping ahead.
See, that's me. Yeah, I know, well, it's, it's one of those things we do. I'm sure somebody wants to say something. So we will open it up for appearances and citizen comments. Anybody wishing to make an appearance, you get three glorious minutes to state your name and address, twice, three times. So glad that was pointed out by you. Really, that was wonderful. Okay, aldermanic request, President Hagy.
Well, I'm going to have a number of comments here, and it might be rambling a little bit, but I'll start off with congratulations to Dennis Regan and Tina Savage on their election wins, and thank you to Brian Baylen and Kathy Isleb for stepping forward. At least it made it competitive, and it's more difficult for the candidates because they have an opponent, but it makes it a more honest election. So also, good luck to you, Kyle, on your new endeavors. And then tomorrow night, the Mid-Murray Legislative Committee will be meeting at 7:00 PM at the Jackson Village Hall. Topic of discussion will be local fire departments and their operations and training requirements, et cetera. Also, the results of the sales tax referendum and how to proceed from that point on. So from here, I'm going to ramble a little more.
Three minutes.
Hang on. Today, I was laying in a hospital bed, having stem cells collected, and had time to reflect on my time on this council. So just a few thoughts, probably more than three minutes. I will be married for 49 years to my wife, Lynell.
Poor woman.
Okay, on May 26th. We bought our house 48 years ago on April 1. I worked at Bron 46 and 1/2 years, and I've been on the council 31 years, 2/3 as long as my career at Bron. Longest I've been out of Hartford is three weeks in 2009 when we went to Australia. I guess I'm a creature of habit, but Hartford's where my heart is. So in the last 31 years, what has changed? Well, Hartford doubled in population. The number of street miles went from 40 miles to 80. Darrell can probably affirm that. Walmart came in, Kmart went out, the Dodge Industrial Park was completed, we added two new water wells, two new water towers, a water treatment plant was built with capacity for one more well, the utility operations center was built, the electric utility has been reconducting and modernizing all over the city. Arthur Road Substation was built, along with Slinger. We have good cooperation with Slinger, do most of their work for them. The wastewater treatment plant was rebuilt in 2000, and we are fortunate that it has enough capacity for years to come and is very efficient at phosphorus removal. Our wastewater treatment plant is one of the most efficient in the state. The best thing about our utilities is that they are up-to-date, reasonable cost to the customers, pay into the tax system, and will be debt-free next year. Public Works got a major rebuild after a fire and has kept its fleet and equipment up-to-date. Hartford Airport got rebuilt and expanded. It is one of two municipal airports in either Washington or Ozaki Counties. The rec center was built in 1998, paid off in 2018. We built a new library, we built a new outdoor pool. The fire department was modernized and expanded in the mid-'90s and now has a site for a satellite facility. Rescue moved into the old utility operations center and now operates three ambulances. CDA, Hart Haven put on, I believe it was a 40-room addition in '94. Washington Heights opened in 2004. Hartford Highlands was bought and operated by CDA for a few years and sold again as it didn't fit our mission of senior housing. City Hall and Police Operations Center were recently rebuilt. Vehicles and equipment are kept up-to-date throughout the city. Good equipment equals good work. Many streets have been result, have been rebuilt, resulting in less water loss, less leakage in the wastewater collection system, and in general, more efficient underground utilities. Public Works does a good job of maintaining our streets. However, out of the original 40 miles of streets, there are still a sizable number to be rebuilt. This is one of my only regrets since serving on the council, and that is to not have enough funding to finish rebuilding the old core streets. A second regret is that Inorland Truck Route has not been built when it could have. Everyone knows about the tremendous truck traffic on the Highway 60 corridor. At this point, I'm not sure what the solution would be for that. I missed, may have missed some other highlights, but not intentionally. It has been my, my pleasure to serve with a great group of department heads and rank-and-file employees. I especially appreciate Steve's services. For my colleagues here on the council, it has been an honor to serve with you. We oftentimes disagree even strongly, but I do respect all of your opinions. Hartford has a lot to be proud of, and I am proud to have at least played a small part in where Hartford is today. A thank you also to the citizens of the second district who placed their trust in me and have reelected me 10 times. So from here on, I will concentrate on getting healthy, and if there is something going on in the city that I feel strongly about, I probably will be back here for comments. And then finally, from me and Lynell, a very heartfelt thank you to all who have offered thoughts, prayers, assistance to us. We greatly appreciate it, and it is, not, not one to be forgotten. I wasn't going to let that happen, but can't help it. Anyway, I want to thank everyone here.
Thank you. With that, Alderperson Resney.
Well, that's a tough speech to follow. I don't know what to say, but Kyle Sikora, it's been great working with you. Good luck to you and your endeavors. And Dennis, what can we say? 16 years I've been with this guy. Maybe we can get to those Mid-Murray meetings if you stay on board. How's that sound?
Well, I'll come along if, if there's a dinner meeting, if I'm able, because the food is usually pretty good.
Will. That's not what I was referring to.
That's what's kept.
But we've done this for 16 years, and it's going to be tough to not go along with Dennis. So, one other thing for both of you guys, before you leave tonight, if you've got any classified documents, turn those into Steve. We don't want you taking any papers home with you, okay?
Put it by the Corvette.
Yeah, by the Corvette, right.
Exactly. Alderperson Carroll.
Good luck, Kyle and, and Dennis.
Thank you.
Been a pleasure. And hope you get better.
We're working on it.
Yep.
Things are going pretty well.
Good. Alderperson Carroll said.
Yeah, just like to thank Kyle for your time. It was, I'm glad we had Bert Alderman in here. It's tough, it's not a tough job, but it's, it takes someone who's really willing to stand here and do, do the work. Dennis, again, it does take someone who's willing to stay for a while and really, really work with the city, work with us. So thank you for your time. We appreciate it, and I'm sure we're all going to miss you.
Thank you.
Alderperson Turchi.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo the comments and thanks for the gratitude and, you know, good luck in your endeavors, both of you.
Thanks.
Alderperson Sikora.
Nothing to, oh, maybe.
Three minutes.
Same, back to Mr. Hagy. You did a fine job. I don't think there's anyone that's going to rival you anytime in the near future, so thank you for that. Thank you for the rest of the council, for all your guidance and everything you've, you've shared and thoughts you've expressed and everything that we've either debated about or all unanimously decided, it was always a great time. When I decided to run, I didn't know much about the city, but I did know I do, I wanted to do more than just vote in an election. So thanks to the 600 or so of you that actually voted for me. I also want to thank everyone who welcomed me in. I had a random number of phone calls, and one night when I was making some bacon, the chief of police announces himself, and I thought they found the chickens in my backyard. It was fun to come to meetings and learn who everyone is and how we get to work together. We have wonderful people on this council with centuries' worth of knowledge and very smart people running the city. I can assure anyone in the city that we are working in their best interests at all times. I am pleasantly surprised how well we can plan ahead for problems, work with local businesses, protect ourselves, and encourage the community. I chose not to run again to keep the council fresh and allow others the same experience I had the last three years. I had a wonderful experience, learned a ton, and made some awesome relationships. It's time for me to move on to different future goals. I know I get three glorious minutes anytime I want, which is actually more than I normally get during a normal meeting. God bless Hartford.
Thank you very much. Alderperson Coler.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I want to thank the, both aldermen. Kyle, you've brought a lot of freshness to the council the last three years, especially some of us guys who are not quite as senior as, as Dennis, but some of us guys who kind of start seeing things in one, in one direction, seeing things one way. You brought a lot of freshness to it. I know you'll be, you're going to be in the area. I know you're serving Hartford still, even after you leave, in more ways than one, but you know, I have a strong feeling with, with the passion that you have and some of your strong feelings that you're going to be, you're still going to have some say in what goes on, and I'm sure you will use your three glorious minutes. You know, Dennis, all I'll say to you is, oh, you get a three glorious minutes, so you got to shorten speeches, cut out a couple of those questions. No, I'm just joking. You're, you're a gentleman that we all highly, obviously, look up to. There's a lot to say when someone with you, with your tenure walks away, and I think they call it, you're losing a lot of the, what's the word to use in business? You know, a lot of the.
Acumen.
What's that?
Acumen.
Well, that, but it's when you, a lot of your tribal knowledge.
Institutional.
What you know about the city, what you know about how it runs. You have brought a lot of that to the table, especially in a lot of our discussions, and that's going to be, that's going to be greatly missed. So we will, we will rely on your three minutes of glory on the, on the thing to keep us in, keep us in line. So thank you very much. I wish you the best of health, and I wish you and your wife a very, very nice, fine retirement.
Thank you.
Alderperson Webb.
I'd like to echo the comments. Kyle, it was nice to have someone generally in my age range on the council. I also, interesting.
You ageist.
And Dennis, I, I would not have been probably on the council without you, and I think we could all try and model ourselves to be as good as you are as an alderperson, especially the institutional knowledge that you have, the history that you bring, which I think is a really important aspect. You know, how we can do good things if we know where we've been and where we want to go, and that where we've been is an important aspect of that. And I think it's really important that we don't always agree and that we have vigorous debate, and that's how we serve the best interests, is that we have a universe of ideas that we can share and try and come to the best outcome, and I think you exemplify that. So I really appreciate both of you giving time to the community and engaging in public service.
Thank you.
Alderperson Phillip.
Kyle, good luck. I know where to go to get your opinion, so maybe it's going to take more than three minutes, but thank you for serving. Dennis, very impressive resume. I was hoping to see how many miles you repaired during your tenure, but we, I would say, me and my family and my wife, thoughts and prayers are with you and your struggle, so.
Thank you. And for you, Mayor, if you need an historical perspective on something, I'd be glad to come down if there's something that might be applicable.
Okay.
One, one other business issue, if I could.
Please.
So I had a constituent that had a concern about dogs off of a leash, and I think I talked to you, Steve, on what our, what our policy is or what we do moving forward. I think the commentary that I heard from that individual was that, hey, should we modernize our ordinance to include, you know, dog collars rather than leashes in order for them to control their dogs? And so I'd like you to comment on that, so we can kind of close this issue.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Do you want to comment right now?
Yeah, yeah. I guess my reference was, hey, are any other cities doing any things beyond leashes and things like that?
I have not heard of any other community that, that would go with a wireless mechanism like a shock collar for restraining dogs or other animals, for that matter, because we, it's almost impossible to enforce. That's the problem with so many laws. How do I enforce that the, the dog truly, or that your shock collar is actually working? I have two of them at home. I have two dogs, too. I should make sure we understand that. But anyways, but the bottom line is, is that the, the fabric.
Can you hear me tonight?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just, we have an opportunity every two years to tap into a little bit of DNR funding to cover fifty percent of some of the activities we're doing with our stormwater program. Anywhere we can get help, I'm looking for it. So we're asking for your support here for this resolution that we will apply for this grant to help us do a handful of things. One is to update our ordinances, just to help out with that. The other is to evaluate whether it would be practical or not to have a stormwater utility here in the city of Hartford. And the third item was to delve into using GIS, Geographic Information Systems, the one that we already have here, but adapt it for use for actually recording work that we're doing on the stormwater system, whether it's a pond or an inlet on your street, that we can take a picture, record what we did, have an electronic record that anyone can access. We can report more simply, it'd just be a more efficient operation, we're hoping. We know that the water utility and the sanitary sewer utilities have both started implementing this geographic information type of reporting, and we've just gotta catch up. So with your support, we will keep moving ahead with our stormwater program and try and get some DNR support to help us do that.
Yes, Alderperson Resniak.
What kind of financial numbers are involved in this grant?
Right now, we're at up to about $60,000 worth of work that we would have up to thirty thousand of assistance with the DNR support. We're trying to figure out what all we can pack into this. It's coming up soon, but we'll ask for anything and everything that is eligible and see how far we get.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for staff? If not, I'd look for a resolution to Alderperson Sikora, seconded by Alderperson Webb.
Motion by Alderperson Sikora, seconded by Alderperson Webb for the adoption of solution 3646.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. We have no ordinances. We go directly to the City Administrator's Report, which is discussion and consideration of amending the lease agreement with Wisconsin Signs LLC. Steve?
Not the first time we've done this. Actually, originally, quite a while back, a couple of years back, we actually got into an agreement with two parties, Tom Masters and Bob Jewell, for the commercial lease of the property in front of the city garage for the purpose of erecting a large electronic dual-purpose sign. Since that time, they have, that original partnership has changed to Wisconsin Community Signs, which is a corporation out of New York, along with Mr. Jewell, and now they are looking to a new ownership with Wisconsin Community Signs, which would be between, the ownership would change to Bob Jewell, along with a new partner, Craig Johnson. Craig, you probably would know more as one of the individuals involved in local newspaper. And so they are here tonight to request your amended lease to, again, continue the same lease agreement as we've had, but again, with the new ownership.
So from my understanding, is the only difference is the ownership?
That is correct.
Okay.
Prices are all the same, the location's all the same, the agreement is all the same. It should be pointed out, because some people will bring it up. Remember, this is a privately-owned sign. They just leased the property in front of the city garage. It is not owned by the city, and we do not endorse any of the individuals or businesses that are on the sign, just in case anyone got a phone call on that last week. I'm not saying what it was about, but he might have gotten a phone call.
Understood. Alderperson Phillip.
Yeah, I just want, so when we talked about this before, you approve the content that goes on there, that still goes through the city process for that, even though it's not our sign?
Yep. Yep, so there is a process they have to submit to me, or there's another destiny, our city planner, who can review it if I'm gone or whatever the deal is. We've got forty-eight hours to get back to them that is approved or not approved, and it goes from there. And there's a very long list of things that are approved or not approved, so it's pretty easy for us to...
Got it. You're just going to the compliance, I'm assuming.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderperson Resniak.
Yeah, I was one of the fortunate ones to get the phone call from a concerned citizen regarding political advertising on the sign. There was an ad on there that probably ran for two or three weeks, the last couple of weeks. How do you guys feel about political ads on that billboard? Any objection to it, or are you in favor of it? Justin?
I mean, playing devil's advocate here, like, if the city approves a political ad, aren't we taking some position about whether we...
We don't approve the ads. We don't...
Well, we're approving the slide, so we are proving that it fits within the parameters. So if you want to change the parameters to not allow that, this is the time to do it. But besides that, it's right now, as it currently stands and has stand for the years that we've had it, we've allowed political signs on there. And ironically, interestingly enough, we've had political signs on there in prior elections, but nobody said anything.
Nobody noticed them, right.
So it was kind of interesting. I was kind of waiting to find out from the person who called and complained, which one of those signs are you not voting for?
Are you, when you say parameters, though, do you mean like, it's like thirty-six by eight, or like, it's not like drugs, alcohol, like gambling?
Yeah, so I'll give you an example. Promote, it cannot promote any community, okay, it cannot promote any community event outside the city of Hartford without prior approval of the city. It cannot promote the sale of alcohol or tobacco products. It cannot promote any type of adult entertainment businesses, cannot promote unlawful or illegal goods, services, or activities.
So it's a whole list in there?
Yep.
So I guess, so L on that list is declare or imply an endorsement by the city of any service, product, or point of view.
Right.
So it would be reasonable for somebody to think that we are potentially taking a point of view. I understand, like, it's a private sign, they're leasing it, but somebody could reasonably assume that, just to answer Wayne's question.
I think you have a good point, but then again, we don't endorse west side, or east side lumber, whoops, east side lumber that has their fifty percent off-sale on lumber that day either. So the fact that it's political signs is the only difference here. So again, but if the council says there is this reasonable enough, reasonable enough feeling that we could be construed as promoting, again, that's where your change would come in.
Alderperson Resniak.
Keep in mind, this was one woman that called me. This wasn't five hundred women.
I got two.
You had two. All right, so we're up to...
And I didn't get anyone called. Both of them emailed me, and they were two gentlemen.
Okay, so we've got just a handful that were objecting to it. After I got the call, I went down there and looked at the sign, took a close look at it, because, you know, in driving by, yeah, there was a political ad on there for one of the candidates, but it's, welcome to the city of Hartford. And suddenly, all the advertising, and then at the bottom, it says Wisconsin Signs. This woman implied that we were endorsing that particular candidate, and I said, no, it's city property, but it's not our sign.
And actually, there's two, there's two election signs on there, one for school board and one for...
That's right.
The county judge seat.
Right. So anyway, this isn't five hundred people that are complaining. This was a couple of people. They had legitimate complaints because they were confused as to, well, that's city property. I can't put an Aldermanic sign on that city property when I'm running for Alderman, but you guys can advertise up there. And I said, well, it's not us guys.
I'll lease you space for your Aldermanic sign.
I'll keep that in mind when I...
It's very expensive.
So anyway, what I'm looking for is, anybody else objecting to this?
No.
I just keep my eye on the road. I'm gonna look at the sign.
Fine. Then I'll make another phone call.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just have one...
Go ahead, Tony, please.
Yeah, I think, I think just the location of the sign and the position in front of the city buildings gives it the appearance, and then, of course, having Hartford on there. But being that it's a lease sign, it's privately-run, I don't see it falling against anything that we've already set up, so just something maybe we could educate the public that, as they come across. I know it's visually, you know, it gives off that, oh, the city's promoting this, but actually it's not, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think I take the alternative view, like, I do understand the argument, and if it was that it was a private entity and we had no editorial discretion, like, we weren't approving the content and saying you can't, we're telling people you can't advertise alcohol, like, it's not a free marketplace, so I disagree, and I think we shouldn't have political ads, but I respect the opinions of others.
Yeah, one last thing, I'd like to add to it. This is actually...
Just flagging.
Are you looking at me or him?
No, Bob Jewell's.
Oh.
Go ahead, please.
One of the things that I would urge individuals to do is to find out more information about the sign, getting more local businesses to advertise in there, and I know this is kind of a free plug, and Bob will owe me for this one, but in reality, we would like to get more businesses to promote on that. If, remember when we brought this forward to this council, we said it was a way to advertise all the help wanted, remember? We were trying to get rid of all the signs along the highway and all along the industrial park, because we want to get more, you know, more people to advertise the help wanted here in Hartford to keep people local. And so again, we hope that more people would take advantage of that, because there is over six hundred jobs available right here in town that we'd love to have people move to, move for, or to take.
Thank you, Steve.
Authorized and paid for by Bob Jewell.
Yeah. We just happen to have, from the audience, and I waved and invited Bob Jewell, who is one of the owners of the sign, and if you'd like to say something, you have three glorious minutes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. I just wanted to speak on the sign and the benefits that we provide to a lot of the charities. You know, we do have a ten percent program with the city, which is in the lease. We've helped a ton of charities, and those are some of the things that go unnoticed. It's kind of like people don't really talk about the good things, sometimes they look for the negative. And other than those, you know, few complaints, I can't say we've had many, you know, other than that, so I really wanted to make you guys aware of that, and we certainly appreciate, you know, working with you. It's been a good relationship, and we can, you know, we want to continue it down the road, so. And if anybody had any questions for me, you know, feel free to ask, so.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Any other questions? If not, Mayor, for the vote.
Thank you very much. Okay, to amend the lease agreement just for the ownership, we've got Alderperson Phillip, seconded by Alderperson Turchi.
Motion by Alderperson Phillip, seconded by Alderperson Turchi, agreeing to the amendment, amending the lease agreement with Wisconsin Signs LLC.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
We stand adjourned.[1584.12]